And for, uh, leading us all in. How great was that this morning?
(laughing)
Um, I'd like to welcome everyone to the, my Chaplain Philip Snodgrass from the Mobile County Sheriff's Office. And at the conclusion, please remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
And our commissioners, and may your work in them be glorious. For it is for your glory and honor that we serve. In Jesus' name I pray.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chaplain.
Real much. We have a number of people here today in addition to the Excelsior Band, a special guest, uh, from, is Mr. Gurley with you? Or, oh, he's not here with you today. Okay, well, we're so happy to have these seven students and I would like to introduce them. Xander McSwain, Seth Picas, Aiden McLean, Adriana Steele, Megan Warren, and so. We often have students who come and, and join us for part of a day. They learn about, all about government operations. And I think this is a requirement in the senior government class. And we are just thrilled to have you here today and I know that, uh, and then we'll take you from there. And Cherie Broussard, of course, is, uh, is our point person and she'll be working with you. So, uh, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you guys for being here. It's, uh, always a, a pleasure to have our students from our community at the commission meeting with their government class to see what your local government is, that's very special for us to get. And the reason we're, they're here today is because we're going to recognize the Excelsior Band for their hundred and fortieth year anniversary with a resolution that will be presented by Commissioner Hudson.
Okay, we have. Well, welcome gentlemen. What a wonderful treat this morning. I think we should begin every meeting this way, don't you? You guys look good for a hundred and forty. That's a long time. Uh, it's synonymous with Mobile and, and we're proud of everything you do and, and, uh, the, the cheer that you bring to people and especially around Mardi Gras when, when, and for your one hundred and fortieth year anniversary. It reads, whereas the Excelsior Band has been performing in Mobile, the birthplace of Mardi Gras in the United States since eighteen eighty-three, the band's rich and colorful history is rooted in a tradition of Excelsior Band for celebrating its one hundred and fortieth year anniversary. And whereas the Excelsior Band, which is well-known for leading and performing during Mardi Gras parades, was selected as one of the national endowment's historical treasures. Do it. And I'll tell you what, Mr.
No other organism has. Mobile. And four o'clock at the history meal. Introduce the band members. So, this is before right now, we are trying, and we have Mr. Herb Nelson, who's probably our newest man. The band doesn't rehearse. There's no pre-rehearsal. Seven years. So, this is our tradition. We tradition. Something like this, uh.
I think what you, uh, I think next we're going to be.
Patient is on the, uh, top row, so we'll, uh, meet up there.
Recent regulations are lead covering. Patients in a filter's comfort and covered over his patients. Who I wouldn't do that for every true wealth. And our Admiral Valor, now we want, and US mechanic, ex-police department. Today, we'd like to thank him. Of course, and for the three, okay, for the hundred and first airborne, the Purple Heart, two bronze, and the Vietnam Campaign Medal. His divisional employment was at international paper. His hobbies and, he's active at Saint John Catholic in Grand Bay. You, and welcome home.
In addition to Joyce Reed, we've got Diane Ingles and Karen Gordon here today. And this is an annual presentation. It's become an annual presentation and it's an opportunity for the county commission to partner with the Quilts of Valor Foundation to recognize and to seeing you. And thank you for your hard work. These quilts are definitely a labor of love and, and much appreciated by all of us as well.
All right, Chris Cherie, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. We have three speakers this morning. Um, and I've spoken to two of them. I haven't spoken to all three. Ring at the five-minute mark. Um, our first speaker today is Danny Patterson.
Thank you, sir, for being here. And if you don't mind, state your name and your address for us, please.
Yes, Danny Patterson, Center or Bayou Clinic. And I, I'm thankful to be here today. I wanted battery in the Codan area, but in all of the areas where people come to. So I'm thanking you on behalf of them. And today I want to, um, being that we're bringing to the county. Um, the equitable neighborhoods and from the Alabama Department of Public Health, the funding came. Able to get four of our communities out of twenty. And the Moa, Choctaw Moa group up in Equity. So, what are we doing? We're providing a youth council first aid training component, uh, not just to community leaders, but primarily to public state. We're creating four healing zones that have space that can be enhanced. Will be put that are autistic for a community. Two hundred and forty come to the city cover. Thank you all for your leadership. Thank you so much, your community. But I just wanted to come and bring try to give back to Mobile County.
County in general, but particularly.
Our second forty-one, Mr. Clemens.
Steve Clements. I live at eight eight four five Dawes Lake Road North in Mobile County. Uh, I, I'm not going to take up time because I got together with the city and all of the statuary that's going to be up and down, uh, Water Street. This is going to be the crown of the, the sports world down here. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Tillman, and he's here to, uh, speak to agenda item number fifty-eight, the junk order.
Think this is a, uh, you can come on down, sir. Uh, this is a, a request for a hearing that's been set for today. Um.
To me, and I texted them to all three of you. So you do have some pictures that he may be speaking about.
Is, are you the property owner? I, my understanding that the property owner was of Mr. Deborah Linder, because there was a public hearing requested or a hearing requested, and I think it was.
Tillman, right?
Requested by whom?
Miss, uh.
She's, uh, is it okay? I mean.
I, I think.
Do, do we need to take it out of order or just allow him to speak?
Well, you can do that. We, we, you know, it's, counties want to do it that way.
That's no problem. I just wanted to make sure that because she requested the hearing, that it was okay. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but if she requested the hearing, I was just making sure that it was okay for us to have the hearing without her here.
I don't know what them, I pulled the vines down, cut the trees. There's still lands underground. Like I said, my mom's going through. I don't know what else to say. I'm, I'm.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's fine. The community, um, around the resi-, uh, the residents, I'm, uh, Mr. Waters, if you don't mind, you can. I think there are some pictures. I don't know if we had them available for the screen or if we were able to get it.
While she's doing that.
And if, on the property or.
There, there has been commissioners. I, um, try to get some pictures up.
Are these the same pictures that we had?
And I did. Being abandoned structure. Um, that's kind of where the case started, some of the area and, uh, so you can get a little better.
Come down here.
I have all the pictures here, but for some reason I'm not able to get them on there. This, I'm sorry, they're kind of small, but from the tree, uh, it's, it's remaining, it's.
Can we pass this now?
So forth. I'm, I, without having access, I don't know for sure if that's happened. Got done. This is, uh, a hazard. This, it has water in it or around it. It's the size it would require by code to have a four-foot non-climbable fence, at very least not have the ladder in it. So the little chalk on the initial response, it was covered up by the weeds. And now the grass is cut, you can, you can see that it's there. Again, one of the outbuild, this door, uh, it's open sometimes and closed sometimes. So it's, I would consider it, uh, not secure. So, you know, people like to find places to, um, to go in and do kind of things that they really shouldn't do. So it was open the time prior to that. So. This note showed up after we start.
So, Mr. Tillman, we also have to be responsive to our other constituents who live in the area who are have, uh, concern. Edo's in the area there, uh, with a, with a pool that looks like that. Maybe that's part of the problem. But I, I guess at the end of the day, my question, my question to you is to, uh, in his office, or he's, he's over all of our inspections and he can tell you what needs to, to be done to this property to get it back to code to get the property, uh, presentable. Sixty days, Jay, is it?
I think that's the reason we could hold this over for two months and we'll see where he is with Tom's assistance.
Would that work for you if we?
Corrected possibly, but I, I see some immediate public safety issues here that have to be handled immediately. And if they're not, then, then there's liability. So I, I think that, uh, Mr. Waters needs to outline what those top priorities for immediate need are and they need to be corrected right away. I mean, within forty-eight hours.
Read the agenda item so that we can, we'll just take it out of order so that we're not taking Mr. Tillman's time today because I think.
Uh, it is number fifty-eight commissioners, that item, if we were to read it, from real property located sixty-four oh one, there Dawes Road. If the commission determine whether or not the building or structure located at said address constitutes a public hearing.
Public nuisance.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, public nuisance. We can reschedule that for thirty days or sixty days, whichever.
Well, I think the day Mr. Tillman had a public hearing, I don't think there was any action on the agenda today. So I think what we could do, I guess, is declare it a public nuisance and maybe give him the sixty days that he's requesting to readdress it. Is that?
We need the eleventh of December.
I think thirty days.
Why don't we just take no action? Wait until December eleventh.
But, but I think, uh, we need to check back within forty-eight, seventy-two hours, whatever you think is reasonable, Tom.
We don't do that on a regular basis.
I, I can't speak for Mrs., Ms. Tillman, but I doubt that her objective was to push this into a declaration of a public nuisance.
No, but I think we were coming up on a deadline for it to be an agenda item is why she, we had already notified her and I think she said. We were getting to a deadline on a notification to where we were going to have an agenda item and this was her opportunity to come speak before that item, if I'm remembering.
So if we reset it a month, we'll add the proper agenda language and if he has cleaned it up, then it may be a moot point. If it's not, then we'll ask the commission to consider it based on the facts at that time.
And in the mean.
Public nuisance, uh, determination.
Is that, are you following that, Mr. Tillman?
Yes.
So usually what happens is we'll have an agenda item to declare the property a public nuisance. I think your mother had just requested a hearing before we got to that point because of the notification that she had received. So I think what we're doing today is we're going to carry this over until the eleventh of December and give you an opportunity to fix it under the, right? Okay, or was you having, is there?
We have no more speakers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I know that was very complicated, but it was kind of, I think the way it was presented, so.
The agenda for today is as follows. Number one, approved minutes of the regular meeting of August twenty-eighth.
So moved. Second.
Two, approval list of claims.
So moved. Second.
Three, authorized amount up to two hundred thousand.
So moved. Second.
Four, authorized sub-reception agreement with the city of Citronelle for road improvements in the Woodland Court community in an amount up to two hundred thousand.
So moved. Second.
Five, authorized sub-reception agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Southwest Alabama for the term of November fifteenth through October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Residential homeowners within the urban county.
So moved. Second.
Six, adopt resolution authorized and request the sheriff's office to dispose of certain items from fixed is assets inventory list and declare a surplus property. Office in Immigration and Customs Enforcement for the reimbursement of joint operations expenses from. Nine, approve preliminary resolution authorized in two thousand twenty-three capital improvement plan projects for issuance of general obligation improvements warrants. Series two thousand twenty-three and an aggregate pending legal review.
So moved. Second.
Ten, adopt resolution declaring real property at sixteen seventy-eight and Road as surplus. To John and Lori Jean Johnston for the sum of twelve thousand plus closing costs and to authorize the commission president to execute all necessary documents. Tanner Williams Road, additional lanes with an estimated cost of two million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. Also decreasing the estimated cost of CIP.
Funds. We said this was supposed to be rewritten to, to reflect an eight hundred thousand plus, uh, amount that was going to go into unnamed funds.
Count that, the, the agenda item is correct as written. It's, it'll be zero, zeroed out at that point. The eight hundred thousand was a confusion between two different CIP programs. There's, there was eight hundred thousand in a different CIP program to that same project.
So what we're doing is moving all the money that was previously in the.
So moved. Second.
Hey Brian, I, I know that they had closed that, uh, Tanner Williams Road for the weekend. Were they, is that back open today?
It should be back open by the end of today, sir.
End of today. Thank you.
Minutes, agenda item thirteen, to change project number from a commission district project to an ARPA project. Appropriation contract with the city of Chickasaw in the amount of forty-five thousand from District One funds for turnout gear protective equipment to benefit Chickasaw Fire Department.
So moved. Second.
Fourteen, approve request of the finance department to amend February ninth minutes. Add in the amount of twenty-five thousand from District One funds for Satsuma Fire Rescue Health Wellness and Fitness Program.
So moved. Second.
Fifteen, approved purchase of four point zero five acres of real property to be part of the Mobile County Sportsplex from Mary Lou Berg located. President to sign all documentation related to the transaction.
So moved.
Uh, I thought this item was removed from the agenda Thursday. I'm sorry.
The other piece.
Parcel.
Item number forty-eight.
Okay.
This one is still.
A horseshoe looking piece of property with the residential.
No.
Now, this is at the front of the complex.
Okay.
Wrong, along.
It's like a puzzle here.
So moved.
Second.
I thought you moved it.
Well, I did, but.
All right.
We, we done it double, twice. It's done for sure.
Yeah, I moved. You want a second?
Second.
Sixteen, approve commission funds for its Bayou on the Move Community Health and Wellness Day.
So moved. Second.
Seventeen, approve sponsorship agreement with Boynton Oak Society in the amount of two thousand from District One Commission Funds for its Boynton Oak Festival.
So moved. Second.
Eighteen, approve appropriation contract with ambitiously him and her King Foundation in the amount of five thousand from District One Education Funds for the Bridge of Hope Young Parenting Program.
So moved. Second.
Nineteen, approve sponsorship agreement with Ambient doing business as Focus Empowering Women in the amount of twenty. Approve appropriation contract with Crightonton Youth Services in the amount of two thousand five hundred from District Two Education Funds for its Youth Health Ambassador Program.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-one, approve sponsorship agree, agreement with Clotilda Descendants Association in the amount of three thousand five hundred from District One Commission Funds for its Spirit of Our Ancestors Festival.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-two, approve amending annual contract with Satsuma Public Library to increase the contract amount from forty-eight thousand, nine thirty-eight to sixty-three thousand, nine thirty-eight for an addition of, additional amount of fifteen thousand from District One Funds for its operational expenses.
So moved.
Nine dollars and fifty-six cents from District One Education Funds to help support the Murphy High School tennis team.
So moved.
From District One Education Funds for its big event fundraiser.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-five, award bid to Delta Flooring for one-year flooring cover and replacing installation at various Mobile County facilities not to exceed one hundred thousand will be paid from Cost Center eighty-four.
So moved. Second.
Commissioners, I have a correction on twenty-five. It actually, instead of being engineering and architectural fees, it should be building repairs. That was my error on that item.
Twenty-six, award bid to James B. Donaghy for Government Plaza Smoke Damp Nurse Survey for their total bid in the amount of ninety-three thousand, five hundred will be paid from Cost Center eighty-four.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-seven, approve assignment to Baker LPA Group for strictly implement of the intake renovations. The proposed fee is eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars will be paid from Cost Center twenty-two.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-eight, approve application for retail beer and retail table wine alcohol license submitted, submitted by Dolgen Corp. For Dollar General Store on Lauryn Dean Road.
So moved. Second.
Store located on Jeff Hamilton Road.
So moved. Second.
Number thirty, we have a change to the agenda of lounge retail liquor alcohol license from Matadi Petroleum.
Okay.
Second.
Number thirty war, thirty-one will be changed as follows. Approve application for transfer of retail beer and retail table wine alcohol license from Matadi Petroleum.
So moved.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve appropriation contract with Hargrove Foundation via, in the amount of five thirty-three. Approve sponsorship agreement with Mobile Law Enforcement Foundation in the total amount of one thousand dollars for its annual luncheon. Foods will, funds will be divided as follows.
So moved. Second.
For the Mobile County Commission to rescind its action in the September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three minutes. Agenda item thirty-four, approving a master service agreement with threat advice for a monthly network security review in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second.
Thirty-six was voted at the conference. Approved master services agreement with Nova Coast to provide assistance with the migration from Exchange two thousand sixteen to Office three sixty-five for the IT department on an ad hoc basis for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars pending legal review.
So moved. Second.
Forty, approve election services agreement with election systems and software to provide election beginning January first and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Pending legal review.
So moved. Second.
Forty-one, will be paid from Cost Center seventy-four. Funding contingent upon the city of Mobile's appropriation of the cost of the build-out of the Mobile Sports Hall of Fame Museum over and above the county appropriation hearing granted.
So moved. Second.
Forty-two, approve service agreement, standard terms and conditions, T Department pending legal review. No cost center is required. Cost will be determined by service orders.
So moved. Second.
Lee Horn and Associates to provide professional services for the Mobile County Park Initiative pending legal review.
So moved. Second.
Forty-five, approve master services contract with Michael Baker International to provide professional. Six, approve request of the Mobile Police Mounted Auxiliary to waive fees for the use of the John Archer Center on November twenty-seventh through December eighth and February seventh through February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four for use during the Mounted Police Instructor Course in the Event Act with the Walker Collaborative for professional services related to the planning, marketing and design consulting, master planning for the Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage. Forty-eight was held over at conference. Forty-nine.
Until further notice?
That's the one I was talking, thinking of.
I know.
Commissioner, I said you want that on.
It's like, both like four acres around the same price. And I was like, wait.
You wanted that to be on a December agenda, correct?
If, if we're ready to move forward.
Well, we'll have those differences worked out and bring it back on the first meeting in December.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
One with Thompson Engineering to provide professional services for the Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan. One, with Thompson Engineering to provide professional services for the Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan, pending legal review, cost paid from ARPA.
So moved, second.
Fifty, approve master services contract and cultural heritage, heritage District Master Plan, pending legal review, contract car, cost paid by ARPA.
So moved, second.
Fifty-one, approve change order number one with Sycamore Construction for Project West Mobile County Park Improvements. This change order will increase the contract by sixty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. Project funding provided as follows.
So moved, second.
Fifty-two, rescind approval of change order number one with McElhaney Construction Company for Project Chickasobe, Chickasobe Park Improvements, the item number fourteen, and approved corrected change order number one, which will decrease the contract price by sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and fourteen cents, making the final contract. Fifty-three, approve agreement to borrow traveling exhibit Rosa Parks, tired of giving in, from the Rosa Parks Museum at Troy University to showcase in the atrium from, from November twenty-seventh through December eighth at no cost to Mobile County, pending legal review.
So moved, second.
Fifty-four, approve professional services with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram CPAs and advisors to prepare the financial statements, schedules, and notes in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, and authorize the commission president to sign letter of engagement. Nation, rescission, and refusal.
So moved, second.
Fifty-six was voted at conference. Fifty-seven, approve amendment number seven to the professional services agreement with IT Security and Software Solutions to extend contract term and amend payment structure for services related to annual tax reporting and the workday software implementation, pending legal review.
So moved, second.
Fifty-eight, we will hold over until with BG SF to provide workday.
Excuse me, on fifty-eight, um, I thought we said sixty days. December eleventh would give him a couple of weeks, thirty.
I thought, I thought we had decided thirty days at the next meeting to give him an opportunity to.
But December eleventh is not thirty days.
I guess fifty-eight, and this is so confusing. I, I think fifty-eight was a request for, to have a hearing. I don't think it was actually, I, I think that was all it was, was the review would be our staff putting the agenda item on, like you were mentioning, to declare the property a public nuisance. So fifty-eight, I guess we've already.
Was the second meeting.
I think it was just a request for the hearing, so I don't think we need to carry it over, maybe we can.
We, what's the second meeting?
Give him Mrs. Tillman her hearing.
No, 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 we did give her her hearing.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is typically, like you were saying, the staff will put an agenda item on declaring a property a public nuisance at the, and, and the owner's been notified. And then they come down and they speak on it. This was just kind of a, I've never seen it in my time here where the owner requested a public hearing before there was ever an agenda item put on. So I don't, I, I don't know, I think we, I need some clarity on exactly what we're, what we, I know that we had to put the hearing that she requested, but beyond that, I don't know that the, this agenda item needs to be readdressed. I think the next, uh, action would be the staff if, if it gets to that level.
And I think even if it goes on the December eleventh agenda, the homeowner would have, still, we can give them an opportunity to continue to make improvements. But it's, this would be generated by our staff based on their information and what they normally would just.
We just, and it looks to me like what we're doing is moving to the December eleventh agenda, the, what we did today. Because there's nothing else before us.
Well, that's, that's what the staff would bring before it's on the eleventh.
I guess on the eleventh, if the time is expired, then they could have an agenda item to declare it a public nuisance, and then we could vote on it then, have the property owner back down and.
I guess our, our staff is going to do that if it's, if it's ready.
We'll let Mr. Waters go back out and review after what happened over.
A request by the property owner for a hearing. We did that today.
Okay.
Maybe that cleaned it up.
Yeah, clean it up, want this back on.
That's right.
If the staff.
If they deem necessary to, to declare it a public nuisance, they can request that of the commission. We did that today. Okay.
Professional services agreement with BG SF to provide workday consulting service. Sixty, approve hold harmless indemnification from In Loving Memory of Brenda D. End of Pavement, a distance of approximately one point. Roads, segments of roads and subdivisions.
So moved.
Of intersection improvements at Air Track about sixty-four. Approved commission district project to create two signs with posts for Department of Transportation, the total estimated professional construction, engineering, and inspection.
Second.
Sixty-six, approve A Trip Two fiscal year two thousand intersection.
So moved, second.
Sixty-seven, in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand for removal of closed bridge structure number thirty-three, thirty-four, force for professional engineering services for the design and construction, engineering, and inspection for removal of closed bridge, through preliminary and final plat of resubdivision of parcels F, G, and H, Terrell Middleton Family Subdivision.
So moved, second.
Seventy, authorize advertising and receiving bids for project. Receiving bids for Project Dolphin Island Streets Resurfacing.
So moved, second.
Practice fields and parking area to DePlantis Design Group, cost to be paid from Cost Center one seventy, Fund one sixteen.
So moved.
Private or public right of way with Alabama Power Company for Project Booth Town Road Grain Drain Base and Pave. The estimated cost to Mobile County is fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
So moved.
Did you have anything, Commissioner Hudson? I, I have a question, and I can't find it now. I think it was voted on at the conference on Thursday, uh, I was going through here trying to find.
We voted on the resolution as a prelude, number nine.
Okay, I was trying to find it. I'm like, I guess I was somewhere else. Will you tell me, Dana, what this?
Out of the probably twenty twenty-four CIP program that you will be able to be reimbursed. So this is kind of like advancing.
When do we anticipate?
Brief call to talk about the cadence and then with the holidays and waiting on December. So we're starting having to, we're, excuse me, beginning to have those conversations.
I mean, we're not going to proceed with a bond until we're finished with our audit, I'm, I would assume, or. But if someone takes, borrows money, basically, if I'm understanding correctly, to start that project unforeseen to us, who pays back that ten? Who pays back? How does that get the bond does not go through, and a commissioner takes money from the general fund for.
At that point, it would just be absorbed by the general fund. They are aware, at least on.
No, no project would be by an act.
I'm concerned with borrowing any amount of money, but if it has to be approved, and we don't think it's going to be approved, why then take me it back is getting an issue with borrowing money, concerned with that.
And we'll move forward. I think that that is, that that's going to, is there that?
To protect our buildings. It, you, if you want to be able to do that, that you have to do it in the air.
If it takes.
And that it would have to pass this. I'm stating my objection to borrowing money. Dana, and that's what she said.
I did.
Like he said, yeah, so that's what, well, I mean, I understand, but they, uh, bought to take hood is what I'm saying. I mean, if you have, I mean.
Is, I've, I've seen, we have had, not wish we had had a resolution like this.
Yeah, well, I've never seen it, and that's kind of why my question.
And I, and I, I get it.
And I guess my question to her, to her, to Dana was. Make sure I was understanding what.